Some of the other people in the organization, but tonight we are here to present Level One and Level Two firefighters. Mike Merrihue and Richard Mayhew. And just a little bit behind that, and I'm sure Phil can add a little bit more, but you know, Level One is the beginning of formalized training for firefighters. It's based on NFPA Standard 1001. And it's just a really good in-depth, basic firefighting overview. And then the Level Two firefighter certification that we'll add on to that is just an expansion of that training, a little bit deeper knowledge. And then they add a few things like public education and some, some good education to that. For the state of New Hampshire, they require 165 hours of training for Level One and then an additional 77 hours of training for Level Two. Before you can take the certification test to earn those certifications. So we thought this was a, this was a great time to come together and you know, as a town, as a town manager and as a select board, we can, we can. Thank these two firefighters for the, for the effort that they put in promoting their firefighting careers and giving back to the town of Enfield. I do want to say this is a, this is something voluntary, voluntary that they did. We do have other firefighters throughout the organization that have done this same certification before we, we put these forward and started bringing them to the select board. So you know, we'd like to thank them for their service as well, going back and then all other firefighters that dedicate their time and training to the town of Enfield. Not everybody goes on to get to Level One or Level Two, but we know everybody in the fire department and other volunteer services put a lot of time and effort into the town. And we'd like to thank everybody, but we want to take a little bit of time and I'll turn this over to, to the chief and he can talk a little bit. And we'd like to present the patches from the select board and then Phil has a presentation from the fire department.
As Ed was saying, this is the hope of something new that we can start to recognize our, our members as they achieve some milestones and, and training goals and so forth. And it's not to take away from anybody else that's on the department, but talking with Ed just felt this is a good, good time to start doing this and giving them the recognition. It is a commitment. It's a lot of time away from the family. It's, it's a lot of, a lot of their own time. And, and as, as the chief, and I think I can speak to Jeremy as an assistant chief as well, but we certainly appreciate the time that everybody puts in and the time these two at this point have put into this, into this training. Mike has been with the department since 2021, I believe, early on in 2021. So he stepped right in and started in Level One. At the same time, while he was doing Level One, he's also doing his apprenticeship for his electrical license. So he's, he's been very busy and that's the other thing that we need to remember is that this training comes typically at night and, and on weekends. So again, the time away from and the time that's given is appreciated. So Mike, Mike completed his Level One and part of what the department has done is we transitioned from the yellow helmet. For those that aren't certified to the black helmet. So Mike, if you would. Richard, Richard Mayhew has been with the department somewhere around from 2015, 2016, from what we could get in the records. Richard has completed his Level One and he continued and completed his Level Two. So the hours that Ed spoke about, he's, he's put those all in and has, has done it back to back. Again, great commitment. We appreciate it. Richard? Now, on behalf of the Enfield Board of Selectmen, on behalf of the entire town and Phil, I'd like to present you with these. Congratulations. Okay. Now we'll move into the two public hearings, which we'll sort of take one at a time. Kate, you want to open the first public hearing?
I'll make a motion. We open the first of two public hearings, which we will do in succession. The first one being for bond or no over $100,000, which is Whitney Hall expansion renovation. And the second being the public safety.
Hearing number one to discuss the expansion and renovation of Whitney Hall, Enfield County Offices and Enfield Public Library. Currently estimated $5,802,150 gross budget. We now declare this meeting open.
Yeah, I prepared a shorter than last time presentation for tonight. And as I told John before the meeting, there's a couple of slides that kind of cover both of these. And then I'll go through Whitney Hall and then I'll save the public safety part for the public safety session. And then there's a couple of conclusion slides as well that I'll do at that time. So just to do this, to give a basic overview before we open it to the public. So that's just the basic cover slide. History. Um, just a brief history of this. We've, the town of Enfield's been discussing facilities for quite some time. I'm sure it went back even farther than this, but there was discussion of town hall expansion and library expansion. Very similar to what we're doing now prior to the vote in 2007, where this came forward to the town. As you may remember, again, there was work on a standalone library after this vote moving into 2016. And that's kind of where we come to the most recent, recent events that we've been through. In 2018, Jay Barrett was hired to do a municipal facilities optimization study. He delivered that report in April of 2019, where almost immediately thereafter, the municipal facilities advisory committee was created. They were charged with studying, and I have this on the next slide, so I don't need to go too much, the facilities within the town and bringing back recommendations. During part of that, Bread Loaf was hired during the MFAQ study. And to bring forward some conceptual designs of what Whitney Hall expansion would look like, what a public safety building could look like and what the cost of those would be. Bread Loaf delivered those designs in 2020. And as you know, just after that, there was a town manager transition when Ryan left and that kind of delayed things along with the COVID pandemic until now. And that's why this is just coming back. Go ahead. A little bit more about MFAQ, Municipal Facilities Advisory Committee. They were charged with analyzing the 12 town facilities. They were also charged to hold multiple public meetings to receive public comment, which they did. I believe it was somewhere in the realm of 20 different meetings that they had that were open to the public. And then I didn't want to present their whole report, but coming out of that, the unsatisfactory facilities that were identified were Whitney Hall, the police station, the Union Street Fire Station and the Depot Street Ambulance Building. And that brings us to today where we have the Whitney Hall expansion and renovation. And then the public safety building, which would combine the police station, Union Street Fire Station and the ambulance building. So here's just the article. If you haven't seen it, I've decided to put that in. It's important to note, and I'll talk about it a little more in costing, that the total sum of the project is $5,802,150. We're asking for a loan of up to 500 or $5,558,086. That's because we have $244,064 of private funds that, that are in the library building capital reserve to be spent on this project. So a little history about Whitney Hall. As I stated in my last presentation to you guys, it's a Queen Anne's shingle style building built in the 1900s to 1901. I think it's really great that this was, this was built off donations from townspeople. Mr. Whitney being one of the major sponsors where then, where the name came from. In 1976, the building underwent a major renovation where the town offices moved into the building. And in 1993, there was another fairly major renovation when the elevator was installed in the offices there. So one thing I really want to point out that I think is getting lost in our discussion is a big portion of this project is renovation of the building. We're keep talking about the expansion portion, but the building's in desperate need of repair. We talked about that a few weeks ago and that slideshow is on the town website if anybody wants to see that. But if you look at it, we're, we're looking to repair water infiltration through the roof and other, other places throughout the building. A big part of this, if you walk around the upper two floors, is removing, restoring and replacing the original woodwork and other historical features of the building. As many of you may know, it's a lot more expensive to take down that woodwork, restore it and put it back than it is just to build new. Replacing, we're replacing rotting and deteriorating wood and structural features throughout the building. Addressing some mold issues, as you can see down there on the bottom right, there's mold coming from cracks and stuff, which lead us to believe there's probably mold within the walls with the water infiltration that we've had. And then it's also to insulate this building to increase efficiency. I've not got the numbers back, but I'm working with Bread Loaf right now, trying to get some sort of conceptual idea of what we would see in cost savings. Once this is more energy efficient, closer to a net zero building. The other part that we talk about is the expansion. This will provide adequate space for the library. One thing I really talked with Kate about last week was the, the expansion will allow for ADA accessibility. We can get a wheelchair through there now, but it's really tight and they can't turn around. She had someone get stuck not too long ago in a motorized wheelchair trying to turn around in one of the aisles. The other thing that's come up a few times was the, you know, the stacks are really high right now. And part of the expansion talk is to bring them down so they're, they're lower stacks. That really, after talking with her, I didn't realize, but it's a, it's a big safety issue. And it makes things that are not too browsable. And she said they've had some elderly people and different people trying to get books off the top shelf that can't really reach. And books fall and people fall and things that we don't want to do. And there's also, if you go in the children's section, they have full-size stacks with books on the top. And most children will not be able to see those books on the upper half of that. So by expanding, we'd be able to bring those stacks down. It'll also increase program availability right now. As you know, one of the things we've talked about is when the school comes up there to use it, there's not much else you can do in the library. So if we're having bigger events and things in the library now, it makes it very unusable. So by expanding, we'll be able to increase that. It would also create a meeting space where people could have meetings and different events there at the library. On the town office side, as you know, we have overcrowding and storage needs. Everything's kind of smashed into that smaller place. And with governmental records, we have a lot of storage needs and requirements. So we try to do that. I also believe it'll increase productivity. And we have that bottom right picture I showed you last time, there are six desks in that one area. So when people are on the phone or people are at the windows, it can get very distracting. And I believe it'll increase productivity if people have their own space where they can get quiet when they need quiet. And they're still going to be close enough to work closely together. And then as we've seen with COVID, it'll increase employee health and safety by spreading people out a little bit and providing some barriers. And then it would also restore the meeting hall space upstairs for the town and select board and other, other boards to be able to use. So if we break down the cost, like I said, the $5,802,150 is the total. By taking out that $244,064, $64, we're able to reduce that. So if we use that number, the $5,558,086, the current and using a current bond amount, based on a 30-year bond with 3% interest. And I do want to point out that the last bond sale in January was 2.36%. So we were, we were estimating for an increase. I don't know if it'll be 3%, but I, I think that's a fairly comfortable number to do our, our basis on. And if we use the current town evaluation, not any changes, we're looking at $48 annually per $100,000 of value. The library pointed out, if we break that down, that's $4 a month per $100,000. And then that's for the average home of $300,000 value, that's $144 annually for the Whitney Hall expansion. So I can stop there for this public hearing and we'll move to the public safety building.
Do we want to wait till we finish both that discussion or do we want to wait at discussion now?
I would discuss the Whitney Hall.
Okay, are there comments? Yes.
I wanted to ask, does that include all these new equipment to have to fill that, those buildings?
That does. It's a, I don't want to call it a high estimate, but it estimates for everything, including new office furniture, new phone systems. Some of what we have will transfer over and you know, we'll be working very diligently to keep costs down where we can.
So that's the same thing with them with the staffing that the.
Public safety building?
No. Municipal.
Yes.
Okay. And this was not put out the bid, right? These people were hired just to come in and design this and.
Yeah, they were hired kind of as a design and build, but it does say in the contract that the bid will go out for the actual construction part of this. So.
Will that happen?
Yes, it will.
So this was, there was an RFP and there were multiple firms. We didn't just go pick a firm.
Yeah. And then, but in that contract, it does say we will go out to bid prior to construction to see if, again, if we can get the best price and save some money somewhere.
Okay. Okay. Before we move on, so we know that you're Sealy, our minute taker is going to be working from the recording. So if you can identify yourselves before you speak, that would be great. Thank you.
Doctor?
David Faye, Maple Street. At the last hearing, five or six weeks ago, you mentioned that there, that you, with a quick review after just a week or two on, on the job, had seen some potential savings in that, that estimate. I attended many of those meetings over a year and a half or so that they were happening and, and asked for, but did it never happen, a review of, of other potential savings for both facilities, both, both, both bonds. And can you elaborate on, on your statement?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure there's ways we can, we can do some cost savings and I'll, I'll talk about some other funding that we may be able to use, grants and different things to, to save some money. But we really need to, we need to base our decision on the actual figures that were provided to us from the consultant. And then as we move forward, we can, we can save some costs as we, as we go along. There's, there's ways to do that, but we also want to be careful that we don't put ourselves in a situation like we did here at the public safety building, where we, where we made some cuts that end up costing us more in the future.
Yeah, Shirley.
Shirley Green. Yes, one of those things is there's approximately 400,000 in fundraising dollars. And when it passes, we will contact every donor to see if we can use that money for the Whitney Hall expansion rather than the standalone. But, and the fundraising committee is going to keep raising funds. And if there is a yes vote, I'm sure there'll be lots more money coming in for it.
Great. Dan, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I did, Kylie. I guess my real question here is, is one I guess nobody could answer, which is, do we believe that this building, when it's finished, is actually going to be worth $6 million? You know, I mean, it appears as though you're putting, I mean, the, the Whitney Hall right now is assessed for $800,000. You know, the big problem with Whitney Hall is then we've never maintained it. For all practical purposes, until we tear into the walls, we really don't know what's in there. We keep saying, well, I can see mold. Well, that mold could be the entire building. And you know, I mean, I guess, I agree, you know, the, will the 400,000 in donations go against the total of 5.8? Or how we say, we're going to have a bond issue for 5.5? And everything over that, we could go up to 6.4 because we just got more donations. Because one of the things in here that is not in this is $450,000 for heat pop system. Which I suspect if one was to look over a 30-year period, you're going to save more than that in heating costs. So I think you really want to put that into the system. If we're going to build something that's not heat efficient, that it's going to cost us more on an annual basis. Probably than the cost you're spending right now on heat.
Yeah, we've looked closely and I've talked with Bread Loaf about making this is what they call net zero ready. So it'll be, it'll be really close. We'll be looking at those efficiencies. As Sealy pointed out, you know, we're not going to be replacing every desk and all those things. So there's going to be some money for that as well. But you know, to answer your question, is Whitney Hall going to be worth $6 million? It's going to be hard to put in an appraise value on that along with the historic value of the symbol of Enfield.
I guess that's the question. Is the historic value with $2 million? Because you could build this about a square footage before. So have you, are you putting on a, you're saying you're putting a $2 million premium on it because it's a historic building?
Well, as you know, things are only worth what someone would pay for them. In this case, we will never find that out because we can't part with this building there. This building was a gift and if we decide to forego keeping it, then it gets tied up with New Hampshire charitable until the next decade or whatever.
Friends, Shirley, you have your hand up.
Shirley Green, the estimated cost to build the standalone building at this time is very close to what it would be to, for the Whitney Hall renovation and expansion. And you're getting three things with Whitney Hall renovation. You're expanding the library, the town offices, and you're preserving that building. So you're getting a lot more for your money.
Other comments, questions?
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am. Your name?
Sharah Buffington. Um, and maybe, I don't, maybe this isn't the time to ask this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. The article later on for the 150,000 to repair for Whitney Hall repairs. How are we letting the town know? That, you know, all about all of these issues, that's just another Band-Aid for the, for the problem.
Well, that, that is there in case the other warrant article does not pass. So at least we're doing something, yeah, you may say it's Band-Aids, right? But at least we're doing something to keep the building a little more intact for another year, when we'll try again, probably.
But that's just the envelope for the.
Whatever most needs to be done.
And it definitely isn't enough. We know that. It's like a Hail Mary to maybe, I don't know, keep water from pouring in and coming out the sides in icicle form. And I'm not trying to be silly, but it's bad.
Keep the birds from flying in.
So it couldn't, so it couldn't possibly address the issues. And it's unfortunate that some people may think that it can.
That's a good point. We'll make that very clear. It's not meant to address the big issues.
I think we're New Englanders, right? A lot of us live in a situation that might be perfectly good. I mean, I have a lot of rooms with no walls. Is it really appropriate? Is it, am I heating the outside in my own home? Yeah. And I think some of us make like choices for ourselves that aren't great choices. But in this case, we know we have to do energy efficiency upgrades. We need to get as close as we can to net zero. The likelihood of making an old building and honoring all of its unique characteristics and making it exactly net zero, pretty low, right? Are we going to be able to possibly offset somewhere else? I think that should be the goal. But you know, we, this is a big decision for us and making sure people know that this building, the building maintenance isn't going to go away. The 150, if, if the town votes down and we do the 150, we're going to have to come back and do something still to fix it.
And do we have a figure for how much it costs a year now to heat that building? Because we'd be saving.
I'm sure we can put it together. I don't have anything readily now. Let me see if I can.
And I think Bread Loaf.
But it's a pretty scary figure from my recollection.
I'm sure it is.
There's what it was about when, right before Ryan left was $32,142 a year was.
Imagine that.
I think that was all the buildings, so. So these four buildings that we're talking about, but all of them are very inefficient.
I think we talked with Bread Loaf and I don't know if we've gotten it about getting an estimate for the future.
We're working on it right now. It's a lot more difficult than it sounds like it would be.
No, I think it sounds very difficult.
I've got a quick question. Jamie Buffington and Anderson Hill. So we're, we're looking at investing $6 million into this building that over 100 years we effectively let fall apart. Does the town have a plan in place to keep up and maintain this $6 million investment properly? So that in 40 years, you know, my kids aren't having to spend $12 million to fix this building. You know, there, there needs to be kind of a progressive maintenance schedule, not just for Whitney Hall. It kind of goes for all of our homes, including all of our municipal property.
Yep. We kicked that off this year. I think we, there have been a number of years of, of asking and we, at least I'm very thankful the budget committee fits to fund that position. And I believe, is it staffed?
It's not staffed yet, but if the budget passes, we do have a position for a facilities maintenance person that will be, that will be working on that and bringing forward the actual needs of the building. So we can maintain them properly.
And we need to get on a cycle of, a progressive cycle where we are not constantly trying to play catch up, where we plan ahead. And we have things like painting, you know, filling the holes that over time happen when you enjoy building together. Sometimes you have small children and things go wrong, right? Or that runs into something. We haven't, and I, it's been something that's been driving me absolutely insane since I reported him four years ago. But I really feel like we as voters and as representatives of this town, we also keep asking for those things to be done and insisting that they be funded. Because there's no sense in wanting any of this if we, one, can't keep you safe and two, can't keep it maintained. Because why keep throwing good money after that?
Other questions? Sure. I'll hear a motion to close this part of the public hearing.
So moved.
And to open part two of the public.
I'll make a motion that we open part two, which is the public safety facility. The current estimate is $7,259,066 gross budget.
Okay, so Article Eight is the public safety building at a total cost of $7,259,066. So very similar here, but you know, one of the big. So, very similar here, but you know, one of the big things that I hit on last time we talked is the hazard to town volunteers and employees. Um, these are very outdated buildings for today's emergency services. As you'll see in that top corner and you'll see on the next slide when we get there from the ambulance facility, it's. You know, open facilities to the garage bay where the diesel engines, diesel fire trucks and ambulances pull in. Um, we know now, this day and age, that diesel soot is cancer causing and, and not healthy for people, so. Um, as you remember, I talked about in the fire facility up there, the cold air return is in that training room you can see. And then the vents go throughout the building. So when they fire trucks up, we pull that diesel fumes through the building and pump it into every room. Um, that's not, not a good thing. And then there's, you know, the. Contamination that we talked about that comes in on the fire gear and we have decontamination sinks in the kitchen. And you have to walk through the bathrooms and other facilities to get to the laundry. So it's just really not a good setup. And the public safety facility would solve all of that by giving us the warm zones where we can decontaminate before people go into the. What they call cold zones where the training facilities and meeting facilities and offices are at. And then, again, we have mold remediation in. At least the ambulance and police station. I don't believe there's any in the fire station that I know of, but the. The ambulance facility, you can see in the other two pictures, there's definitely water infiltration into that basement almost year round. There's white mold for sure growing on the, on the ceiling in the basement and I'm, I'm sure there's some other bad stuff in there. And then the police department, I don't know if I got a picture of that in here, but they have some, some water down in their basement area as well. Some, with some mold on the walls. And then, meeting current compliance standards as I talked in the last slideshow, again, that's on the, on the website. You know, the safety things are not compliant with ambulance and fire facilities. We have some other compliance issues with that. And then the police, there's some technology issues and things that makes us non-compliant with CGS. Um, here's some more reasons. Again, meet current compliance standards. Uh, create adequate space for operations. Um, as you can see. The buildings are pretty crowded. There's, you know, storage in your break rooms for medical supplies. The technology in the next pictures, the police department, we have things stuffed in a closet to try to make them work. Just because there's no room to put them anywhere else. Um, having a training facility in your garage is not, not good and it's non-compliant. They won't allow us to host state trainings in there even for our own people. You know, better, the buildings will be better suited for the use of current technology. That's kind of the police one. Again, if you go in there, there's, there's holes drilled all over trying to run wires. Where we could easily chase them in a new building and have, have new updated equipment to have better technology. Um, create proper training facilities. Um, again, I have the ambulance picture in there, but all of our. All of our training facilities are lacking a little bit and don't have the current technology to be able to, to use them together. Um, by putting these together in one building, we can create one state of the art training room. And everybody can use it instead of creating multiple training facilities. And we can increase efficiency through utility costs, time efficiencies and service efficiencies. Again, bringing all of that into, under one roof. Instead of trying to heat three different inefficient buildings, we'll be heating one building, taking care of one building. I put time in there because, you know, I watch, I watch Phil at least and I'm sure Richard does the same thing. Going to the fire station and running over to the police station to get some information and back to the fire station. And then service, it's just a nice one stop shop right there. Anybody comes, they need to pick up reports from an incident. They can just walk into one facility, work with our, our assistant that'll be right there to be able to get the services that you need. So possible locations, I talked about this a little bit last time, but. Um, the building was designed for the SAU property. Doing a little bit of research, it looks like that cost has went up as well a little bit. But we're estimating land cost somewhere in the ninety to hundred and twenty thousand dollar range for that three acres of land. But site development costs on Bread Loaf's list was approximately one point seven million. As you know, that's a. A ledgy area and we'd have to pull services down that road and rebuild that road to be able to handle fire trucks and some of the heavier equipment that we have. I have worked with Rob and we've discussed his, it's a little over three acres. If we go all the way across. It's about two, a little over two acres of usable space. We tentatively agreed if everything moves forward well on a land cost of about five hundred thousand. But site development will be dramatically less. I don't have a number for that. But the land is clear and level, ready for building. There's water sewer and three phase power on the site. Um, the road that he built going into Shaker Hill Granite is highway standard, so it's heavy enough to handle fire trucks now. And the soils that he's found on his side are pretty easy to work with. So it, it looks like a very good building site. Really close proximity. If you look at the map, the bottom picture is the site. If you haven't been by there, it's flat and clear and easy. I also believe we'd be able to get DOT approval to have a, a bay that exited right onto Route four. Might be a little paperwork, but that would be a quick, easy way out of there for the fire and ambulance. So breaking down the cost again, seven million, two hundred fifty nine thousand, sixty six dollars. Using the same bond information that would cost sixty two dollars annually for a hundred thousand dollars of value. Write that down, that's five dollars and seventeen cents a month. Or a hundred and eighty six dollars annually for our average three hundred thousand dollars of value for a resident. So just kind of to summarize all of this, um, cost and additional funding, like I said, the library. Said that they would continue to solicit private donations. Shirley can speak on this in a minute, but I've. I've heard that they have donations waiting that are just kind of waiting to see if anything moves forward. They don't want to donate their money if there's nothing gonna be done. So we do expect some more donation. Um, and then on the grant front, we've been doing some research. Chief Holland's been helping quite a bit. And there's, there's a lot of grants out there and available. That doesn't mean we'll get them. I can't guarantee we'll get them. They're all competitive grants, but there's, there's definitely some funding opportunities out there, not only for equipment that'll go in these buildings. But for the facilities themselves. The, I guess the little stipulation there is to apply for these grants, we have to have taxpayer approval first. We can't go apply for them and get them and knock off the cost. They, they want to see the taxpayer approval and then they'll possibly help fund the construction. So this is just a breakdown again at the end, a little bit neater, putting them together. I think the big thing to take from this slide is that bottom number with both projects. Would be an annual cost per hundred thousand dollars of value of a hundred and ten dollars or three hundred and thirty dollars. A year for our average resident.
Thank you. Yes.
I just had one thing about the funding. Uh, we sent out a letter last February letting people know we were supporting this, the Whitney Hall renovation expansion. Instead of the standalone building. And, uh, this wasn't an ask, it was just an information letter. One, we got twenty five thousand dollars from one person and that person also offered a twenty five thousand dollar match. So that's what we'll go ahead of.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Other questions or comments?
Walter Mendorf, Anderson Hill.
Yes.
Uh, the cost of the land for the public service building, is that? Public, you know, does that figure into the cost of this or is that separate in a part? Since we don't already own the land, you'll have to purchase it?
Actually, just hold up the fee and the owner land cost. I was looking at it because. I was, I was looking at the blasting and the things we had talked about before. So I, I think we can cover it.
I think we can cover it. It's not technically in the, in the write-up, but I do think it can be covered. One thing that I do want to caveat is that the vote to purchase that land would have to be separate. But once we get approval, then I think it makes sense to move forward and try to purchase land. I don't think the. Town should be going out trying to purchase land before we have approval to build the building.
Oh, I understand that.
Yeah. I believe the, the bond will cover it as well, like Kate said, but it's, it's not technically in the write-up of the cost, but.
We had done some test pits and I, I worked on the new high school project and so I was familiar with that. They went out, they did more test pits. So we knew there was ledge, which is why we went back. Um, and so that was built into this proposal. It's the knowledge that if we use that site, that we would have significant construction costs, like Ed said, the roadway. Getting utilities and we need three phase power, um, which is a great reason to be on Route four.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's, it's pretty much, I mean, if it goes forward, it's pretty much a no brainer trying, you know. The, uh, the granite property.
Yeah.
Because it's right there, right on top of the hill. You don't have to worry about a lot of drains. It's up out, you know. It doesn't have a water table you have to worry about and all the facilities, everything's right there.
And it's, it's an ideal location.
Yeah.
Yeah, for the services.
And I do believe that. If you look at the SAU property and this was factored in the cost of the one point seven million dollar site work. I think that five hundred thousand and whatever site work we have will easily fit within that one point seven million.
We had eighty thousand as the land cost before, so I mean, obviously it's not five hundred thousand, but between the two, we should be able to.
Doctor.
Um, tip effect again, um, the, uh. So there would be substantial additional costs and delay in time for the school district land. Um, as I understand it, is there a similar delay for the, uh, the Grand Hill? Uh, land before we can even get started with this? Where's it standing? And it's, is there some sort of tentative agreement with Rob to, uh. To, to, to sell us that land, um, even if it takes a year or two to get it done?
Yeah, I have a tentative agreement with Rob. He said, we know, we're kind of waiting to see where this vote goes. I'll talk to him a little bit more on the, the purchase and sale, but I've talked with our attorney and we could actually. Sign a tentative purchase and sale agreement pending a vote from the town to purchase that property.
Next March.
Probably. I mean, there's the opportunity to do a special meeting to do that, but. We also have a year's worth of engineering and architectural design to do. So as long as we're fairly certain we can do that, we can start moving through the, through the design of the building, the final design. And get that, get that done. So I, I think we could get it done on our timeline to keep the projects moving forward.
Shirley.
Uh, I should mention this too, uh, for the light, we had a hundred thousand dollar pledge. Which, when we talked in the last year, pulled back on it at that time because it had been so much time had passed since they made that pledge. But they said, when things are moving forward again, to come back.
I, we have some standing authorization to buy a land. I don't remember all of the details.
We have the, the select board has authorization to purchase property. It's the funding mechanism that will have to get approved.
So we would be able to at least execute the PNS and.
Yeah, I talked to, I talked to Jim Raymond from Upton and Hatfield about that and I talked to the bond bank and Jim Raymond about our current. Article wording and whether we would be able to purchase land as part of that project. They both said we would have to get a, a special vote. To authorize that money. I'll work with them a, a little bit more. I don't know if I discussed in detail with them the authorization. That the select board already has there and whether that would fit in that funding. But for the bond purposes, I think they want that vote as well, so.
I mean, we can otherwise petition with Superior Court for this special hearing, but it's not very much fun to do.
No, I think we can, like I said, I think we can enter that purchase and sale agreement pending the outcome of that vote. We can do the engineering and we can move forward and get done.
Seeley.
Yeah. Well, my big concern is, is with the, this facility is that. Enfield, you know, the kids get involved, I've said this before, the kids are involved with the, with the police. And, and they're there for them all the time. They can walk from, they can walk there with their classes and so on and so forth. But when they're, when we, if you're gonna take all the departments and put them up there at the. And the, the town line, so to speak, they're not gonna have the access that they do. And I think it will take a lot away from our, our goals to keep, um. The community more together. And I just would like to see more looking at different land. And if you're gonna go and buy five hundred thousand dollars worth of land, maybe you can buy some of that closer to the village. And in a place that would be, um, doable, really.
I, I think a lot of work.
That happen instead of just running around and.
A lot of work was done in the past, looking at land and there's remarkably little land that is, that all suitable for this kind of facility.
We weren't paying that much money. So not, not, I don't think a lot.
It wasn't a matter of money when we looked.
You save the lot, all the work done, I, I know. I have a lot of respect for all the work they don't think, they've done. But I've done a lot of work too over forty years and it isn't always gonna go the way you want, you know? But I'd like to see us hang on to that sense of community and keeping these guys accessible. To the people in the town.
Well, I, I think what, one of the, the benefits of this whole project is we are keeping Whitney Hall where it is. The library in Whitney Hall, town offices in Whitney Hall, and I think that will remain a center of community there. You know, I, I don't think we necessarily have to have the police department there.
Two chiefs too.
Okay, yes. Fire department first.
I, I understand what you're saying, Seeley, from, from keeping the community together, but. I don't see many of our programs originating at the fire station. I see our programs going to the preschools, to the elementary schools. We're traveling out to them. Um, the only thing that I can remember, and I wasn't chief at that point, but prior to COVID. Retreating at the, at the fire station, but I think that's still, that's really the only thing I can think of, that the fire station. Was the center of.
What if you have a kid that has a problem, wants to go talk to a policeman? How's he gonna get there? You know, there's no access to it.
I don't think there's no access and I believe very strongly that anybody in this community, if you didn't have a telephone, would likely loan you one. They will come for you. I have never called emergency services and had them not come. Um, and I think it's more important for them to be available.
You're talking about a call, I'm talking about, of like just kids walking around and he wants to go talk to a policeman.
Right.
Chief, can you address this?
Sure, um, I, in twenty, twenty plus years with Enfield. I would say that it, it would be a, a much, much higher percentage that they waved down one of our patrol officers as we go. Or it's when we're at Hughes Park playing basketball, or when we do, when we do lunch with the, the lunch with the police officer program. I echo what the, uh, the fire chief said a hundred percent. And I also want to, I, I would also add on to it that if you look. Um, many, many communities are moving their public safety facilities out of the village because. The amount of vehicles coming and going for those, it's a safer environment to not be in the downtown village. Um, than it is to be someplace co, all co-located upside of the downtown village. Because while ninety percent of what we do is, is, uh, patrol and go out there, when we do respond to emergency. We take care, but we're also moving, you know, fast. When we have a volunteer fire department or an on-call fire department, on-call ambulance. We have people coming in and going out for emergencies. And so those, moving those locations from the downtown village is a, a safety, is also for safety thing. And I will say that, um, when, uh, John hit the nail on the head, I walked around with, with, uh, the old town manager Ryan. To every piece of property, um, from Route four past ten places all the way down to the other side of Main Street. Knocking on the doors and making phone calls and nobody in the downtown village was willing to even talk about their property for a public safety facility. And nobody in the downtown village was willing to even talk about their property for a public safety facility, so. There was a lot of legwork done to try to see if it could locate there, places it could. But reality was, when we looked at the studies, when we looked at the, with the M F A, we looked at the studies, we looked at the talked to the places that moved their facilities outside and and places that built the facility still downtown. The common factor was for safety reasons and and other things is they moved it outside of the downtown.
Gary Hudgens has his hand up.
Boom.
Gary Hudgens.
Oh, Gary, yes. We can't hear you yet.
Anything?
No, yes.
How's that? Okay, uh, it 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 certainly doesn't take a a brain surgeon to figure out that in the past, Enfield has built everything as cheap as possible. And and the the people of the town of Enfield should be ashamed of the buildings that the current fire station is in. And the and the ambulance building, it's it's just ridiculous how long we've had them in there in a building like that. I am all for building the new public safety building, but unfortunately, the current design is nowhere near where you need to be. You guys spent the last month and a half basically whittling the building down, making it smaller and smaller and smaller, basically so it can get a footprint that the town of Enfield might possibly go for. But I'm on the other side of the coin. We need to make this building a lot bigger than what you need today. So that ten years down the road, we're not coming back to the town of Enfield, well, we need to put an addition on because we gotta do this. And the current police department is exactly the the example where that was built, probably, you know, just to suit the needs at the time. And now we're in a position, however many decades down the road, where it's too small. And the other thing is, the the current uh, design was based on a wood frame, lowest cost, you know, minimum code construction, and you, we can't build buildings like that anymore. Tonight's probably the first meeting you guys have had in that room right there, where the furnace hasn't been running the whole time you're in there. And I, you know, that building's what, twenty years old, and we 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 cheaped out on that one. So I think we need to really look, take a hard look at this, at the, at the current design. I mean, three-phase power was taken out of the build, which we need. No plan was made for accommodating electric vehicles, and we all know where that's coming from and where it's going to. So we need to have that in effect. And my personal gripe is there's not enough room in the police station park to store all of their equipment inside. We shouldn't have cruisers out in the snowbanks out back and everything else. They should either be on the road or in the building, stored, secured. And we should plan on having that space. The way I look at it, we're we're probably five thousand feet light on this current building. And it needs to be net zero, and it needs to have solar installed when we build it, not ten years down the road, not think about it. We need to have that in the plan. Okay, I've said enough.
Thank you.
We haven't changed the size.
No, the size hasn't changed.
I was gonna say.
From twenty twenty, and I think there's still three-phase power planning to go to the building.
Well, that's easy enough to do.
It was deleted in the original plan, and and what I was referring to is during the planning process, they cut the size of the building down, moving walls, you know, a foot here and there, just to keep the footprint small. And that's not the way to plan for a building that's gonna be fifty or a hundred years old.
I think one of the things we all need to remember when we plan, because we we don't do that this often around here, is same thing with the school district. You have to go in with a conceptual and some numbers that are your best estimate. But if you learn something in the process, like we've learned how important that zero is, I mean, it's always been important to me, but you you come to an understanding of what you need in your community, and those are the things that are going going to go into the final design. You never get exactly what you start with in your conceptual as your final, and I think things like the three, three base power, they can be added back. I think there are things that Ed has from his experience, um, because Ed has a background in fire service that can be brought in, and we're obviously looking at a slightly different site. So there's a bunch of opportunities here to make sure that we don't just dial back into a couple of years ago, that we take the best information we have right now and we use it.
With someone who hasn't spoken yet? Hey, Seeley.
Okay, I just wanted to ask, um, Kate, you said you're looking at conceptual, this really isn't a conceptual, this is the plan.
No.
So it's not the pre-plan?
No, that's not how it works when you're buying something. You don't have a a plan as a final architectural design. We do not have that. That is, that is what would be designed in the ensuing months following approval.
Then how can you get the estimate?
Because these people do this for a living and they're qualified professionals, they have an amount for the style of building and the materials that they expect to use, and so they make an estimate. It's just like in life, you buy a new house. The previous owner tells you how many gallons they use, right? There is a little bit of trust and faith, but there are real life examples of estimating how, and so I'm in supply chain, I estimate all the time. Am I gonna get it to the penny? No, you're never gonna get it to the penny, and I challenge any of you, you're not gonna get it. However, you have to go through this full exercise of development to put something up for a bond, or it's not responsible. So we've done the responsible due diligence steps to say this is something that we could reasonably make, and this is the price it would cost.
But you're saying that we've got this contracted or ready to go on a contract, so you're accepting it the way they got.
No, that's not at all. I think you're maybe not, yeah, I I I.
You think that the plan, you made the estimate on that, so how can we really be sure that's gonna cost no more than what you're asking, seven and a half million or whatever it is? How do you know if you're saying to me that you're not, we don't, nobody knows until you actually.
So I'll give you a really easy example of basic budgeting.
I don't like, this is complicated.
No, I'm gonna give you a basic one so you understand, and I'd like you to give me a second. So we're gonna make a cardboard box. We know the size, you determine the kind of cardboard you want and how you want it corrugated. And then you go to say five folks and you have it quoted. This is what these folks do for a living. So you you are taking all of those complicated elements and putting them through an estimating program. Right? This isn't something made up, this is something that has software behind it, that has real data. It is using current market pricing, so we had them update the price. Unfortunately, as we know, it all went up. So these are the kind of steps you go through. And if you've built anything recently, you know that you start out and you do your very best, and we, but once we vote on this, that's our number, and we have to stick to it. And I like the idea of the fact that we have to stick to it, because it means we are making a commitment to the voters not to exceed that amounts.
And I think that's something we need to keep in mind, that we could have many dreams about what we'd like. At the end of the day, we have to be very realistic, and we have to meet a sensible budget because the voters aren't gonna pass it if we cannot make it sensible. I think that Ed has done a fantastic job with other people delineating the the failures of our present buildings. It it is humiliating to ask people to work in some of these buildings. It imperils their health, it gets in the way of uh, getting the work done. And we know we have to fix this.
Yeah, you do.
Are are we gonna get everything in the world we want? My feeling is, no, nowhere in my life have I ever gotten everything I want. But we'll get what we need. Dan?
Yeah, just, just a quick thing on the land. I would put the school property aside, could not even talk about it. Because I'm not even sure the school board wants to sell it. You could have a vote where the people voted for it, and it's an advisory vote. Because it's actually up to the school board to sell the property. So that could put you two years out, two more years, two more years.
You don't want the that ledge. And the, and they talked about how many feet they could go down, so that would really interfere with putting up a building and the water.
And Linda Blaine's not a good exit. You're better off with with Rob, Rob Vols's exit.
Surely.
I think another very important consideration is that the sooner we apply for a bond, the lower our interest rates gonna be. And it's not by next year, who knows what it could be.
I can just give a little update on that. I've been in discussions with the bond bank. They normally have their sales in January and July. They're moving their sale up to June this year to try to catch the interest rates early. They're working with us, we've already started an application, they know it's pending the vote, but they're working with us to make sure that we get into that bond sale if this passes, so we can capture the low interest rate.
Yeah.
I just wanted to, so there was, there's stuff on other properties too, and this is all on the town website, which is enfield.nh.us, but we didn't just like walk by and look. We had our foot people out knocking on doors, and then properties that were reasonable to look at, they actually went through, pulled the topographic maps and sighted a chunk so that you could try to see where you would get in the driveway. So these were, these were, no, this was no small project, there's many, many properties. You can go through and take a look at all of this um, right online. So and it's in the Enfield, it's um, it says M F O S, M F O S report in their color inserts, it was part of a PowerPoint, so extremely detailed layout of, because they're not making new land, right? So what are you gonna do, knock on five houses and be like, yo, we're tearing your house down? No, we're not that kind of neighbor, right? So they did this stuff, I mean, we looked at Hughes Park and you people can get upset if they want, but we did the scenarios that were chunks, things that we own, shed street, right? D P W, which we're all like, oh, there's some, you look at the lay of the land here. It's not as, but it's all there, so you can see it, right, and say to yourself, wow, I always thought D P W. Take a look, because it's right there with the topographic map, and and that work has been done, and I, I think it's very important to know. If you know of a giant chunk of land that's downtown, that's gonna be a stellar deal, you call Ed tomorrow. Because we are looking, and you know, I don't think anybody's gonna say we automatically came up with the best solution on the first try, this has been an ongoing process with a lot of input. And if you come up with the best solution ever, we're taking it, right? Right up until we sign the ink and put the first piece in the ground.
You look on four ages for.
We did.
Doctor.
I I echo all that's been said about the the land. I attended many of those meetings, I was critical of much of the process and and quite a lot of the results in terms of cost, et cetera. The one area that is definitely not a concern to me is the adequacy of evaluation of the availability of alternative land, the fact that this has come up. Uh, you let me know a week or so ago, um, it is just incredible for for this, and it it makes this whole process a lot different and and a lot more favorable. It may, it's, nothing's gonna be perfect, Seeley, but unless you demolish, um, you know, who knows where down Main Street, you're not gonna have it in the center of town.
But we considered that.
I, I'm inclined to close the public hearing at this point unless there are urgent comments that need to be made. Got a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, sorry, uh, just so, and I just wanted to echo what what Ed had, uh, the town manager said before. Um, you know, he's, uh, definitely been helping look for grants and stuff like that, and um, right now, we're fortunate, uh, or this year, I think is an important year that, one, that we have this discussion, tell me, but two, and coming to the end of a pandemic, um, as we know historically, those of us who have done federal grants, stuff like that, at the end of any major event, all of a sudden the feds, the federal government pours millions and billions of dollars into grants. And so while I spend, I dedicate a certain amount of my time each day to looking for grants and stuff like that, we can't even, and and there are, uh, and if somebody wants to reach out to me, I'll be happy to 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 go through some of the grants out there. There are millions of dollars worth of grants that we'd be competitive for. Like I said, I can't guarantee anybody, I I I don't, I don't say hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars of grants we'd be competitive for, but we can't even apply unless, until the town says go forward, you know, and so, uh, I I just want people to kind of keep that, and I'll be, I'll be happy to speak more about it at town meetings or like that, but uh, keep that in the back of your mind that, you know, those grants, if we go, if we go back, if we learn anything from history, right, when we first, when, and I know Enfield has always been on, I'll say for my, the good signs, like when, 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 when we wanted to redo the school. And I know the Enfield community supported the school, and it did pass that first year, right? What happened the next year? Millions of dollars worth of grants that were there that would have helped pay for that school went away. And so while I'm not trying to scare anybody into anything like that, I'm just saying that this is gonna be one of those situations where this year coming up, you know, everybody were coming to the end of a pandemic, and everybody knows about the trillions of dollars that the government has kind of put out there. This is an important year for us to think about, okay, how do we go forward with this and 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 what's best gonna help Enfield in the future?
Thank you, appreciate that.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor? Thank you very much for coming, folks, thank you for your input.
And then we need to, we need to vote to put it, to reaffirm our vote, to put it on, or so it's just the hearing and we're good.
Okay.
That's already been published.
Yeah, I know it's already been published, but I didn't know if we had to reaffirm or do some, some things to make the government.
Next, we have the approval of the minutes of March twenty first.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Uh, I would second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the town managers' reports.
All right, couple, couple updates. Um, we just went through them some, but I saved a little bit for after, we have bond article updates. We've completed video tour um, last week of the Sunapee Public Safety Facility, that should be posted fairly soon on the town website and Enfield channel. We are planning on videoing a tour of Whitney Hall. And then I also wanted to let everybody know that we're planning open houses for April twentieth and April twenty third. Um, the twentieth will be six to eight P M, and on Saturday, April twenty third, it'll be from nine to noon. It's about what it sounds like, we're gonna have a few people on staff to be there to to just help people walk through the building and and show them around a little bit and maybe point out some of the, some of the issues we've had and some things that are good in the buildings.
Is it all of the buildings or?
All of the buildings that are on the warrant, so the police facility, the Union Street Fire Station, the ambulance building, and Whitney Hall will all be open.
Is there a suggested like tour pattern, like start here or free for all?
Free for all, we're trying to figure out Whitney Hall still, and I'll be working with the library, but I know Chief Holland was saying there's gonna be a couple of them there, and they were just gonna start tours every ten minutes or so of the building, so show up and we'll, we'll try to get you through, and I know Chief Neely was saying the same thing, he's gonna have a few volunteers there to walk people around and show them the building and.
Can we give everybody a stamp passport and they get pizza if they go through them off?
You can talk to Enfield Pizza too.
I'm only slightly kidding.
So I wanted to give an update on the water project and S R F loan that we have just talked about and approved. Um, we have a one point nine million dollar water project, we've been notified from the state D E S that we've been offered a five hundred and seventy thousand dollar ARPA grant. And then ten percent forgiveness of the one point three million dollar remaining loan. So that'll give us actually a hundred and thirty three thousand dollar forgiveness. Um, together, this equals seven hundred and ten thousand dollars of the one point nine million dollar project will be considered a grant fund as long as it's approved by governor and council. So that was good news to get last week.
That's excellent, thank you.
Staffing, I'm happy to announce that we've made an offer for our buildings and grounds maintainer position in public works that has been accepted. They will be starting April eighteen. Um, what this means is, right now, we are technically fully staffed here in the town, so we'll we'll continue watching that, we hopefully have a couple of positions coming up. I do continue to work on the recreation director position. Um, that's still open, we have not filled that at this time, we'll continue working on that in hopes of that passing um, town meeting, but we knew this was gonna be a a fairly difficult position to fill with the right person, so we'll continue working on that. We will be moving to Microsoft Teams, we were gonna actually do it tonight, was our first one, but this had been publicly warned warned as a Zoom meeting, so we will be moving to Teams after tonight. We've been doing some research in town, um, Rob Taylor and Elise have been working pretty hard at making sure they understand. The inner workings of Teams. There are some. Pretty neat features that we're working through. Um, one of the things and it. It works fairly well, I think is what I'll say is, um. There's closed captioning. So as we're talking, the words will come up on the screen, which will help for A D A access. There are people that may have some hearing issues will be able to, to read along and it's, it's right. Most of the time.
I, I use it. It's, it's close enough that you can figure out the sense of it. Sometimes. There was, I had an interesting moment in a professional meeting the other day, but yeah, sometimes it has a moment.
And then along with the same thing, um, talking with Sean Mulholland through some emails that we had going in a chain. There's also with the same closed captioning thing, there's a transcription service you can get. And he says the record keepers, minute takers really love that part of it. Cause you can print out the meeting when you're done or copy and paste into your minutes long sections that you wanna use. So. So we'll be looking at that. Where's the part? As we move to team, there'll be some first time. Things that people need to do as they join the meeting. You may need to re, be required to download the Teams app. Under your computer. So just warning people to give sufficient time to, to download that before the first meeting.
I think they can join from the web browser. My experience is if you have an Office three sixty five account. Or say four or five like me, then it wants you to use one of them. And you, unless you clear your browser cache, you have to pick one you already have. She, so I always tell people that's like, I accidentally joined a professional meeting with friends of Masco the other day. Because I work for an entity that does not have, but I would have used my personal one. Um, so I think there'll be some bumps like that where people will, will have a brief moment. Um, Bridgette and I did a, a test one the other day too. Because she has that issue where she is the cemetery. She can't get out of the cemetery one. Which is a little odd for some people, but you know, I think it's well worth it and you can pull documents and then within the office like. You can have like a two second like phone meeting and show somebody something on their computer. Instead of trying to train somebody and going into their office. So you can be like, click here, here, here and let someone drive. So I've done most of my training for people online. I, I love it.
Yeah. So it'll be good. We'll be moving to that. We did let, uh. We have two Zoom accounts for the town and we let one of the two Zoom accounts lapse.
After the, well, we did, but I had to reinstate it for this meeting. So we have one more left. Only paid for one month. Then we're done.
Um. With that, I didn't put it on the agenda, but I wanted to let the, let the select board know that we're, we're entertaining putting in for the scenic byways grant. This has been recently announced. We had a meeting late last week. On ideas for that. Um, so one of the, what we're thinking about right now is putting in for. The parking along Main Street by Lakeside Park, rebuilding that with. Parallel parking as long as I can get D O T approval with curb and sidewalk and gutter through that area. And then also connecting Lakeside Park down to the Shaker Bridge and then across the bridge. Building a multi-use path from the bridge down to the Shaker Village. Um, part of the scenic byways grant, they want large grants somewhere in the realm of half a million to million dollar projects is what they're looking for. Um, it will be, if we get this, a twenty percent match by the town. So we'll be coming back to you before we put in to. Talk about the project in a little more detail and to get. Final approval to put in for the grant before we do, because there'll be some. Funding that the town needs to put forward, but my hope is. If we include the Main Street parking part of that, that's something that the town's really looking at doing anyway. And our match portion may be the same or less than what that project would cost us.
Sidewalk is in such bad condition. I'm sure D P W gets complaints because I get them. And I certainly understand. I know it's not necessarily super high on our priority list, but in order to tie in Main Street and really use it, well, we walked on it together, all of us.
Yeah.
And it was an interesting, very well meaning walk, but it was a very wet walk and a very bumpy one.
And I guess my hope with this is if we can get a, if we can get a million dollar project done. For the cost of the parking and sidewalk that we're gonna be looking at doing anyway, then that's gonna be a, a real big benefit to the town of Enfield. So we'll, we'll continue looking at that. I am gonna put in a letter of intent because it's due by next week sometime. And let them know that we're looking at putting in, and then I believe it's late May or early June when the grant actually has to be. And then one other quick update is, um, the tax collector town clerk's office will be closed on Wednesday, April thirteenth for training. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, communication, we have a resignation from the Recreation. Commission.
I know that we accept the resignation.
Uh, second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Under present business, we presented the firefighter certifications. We need to accept the five thousand dollar grant from Eastman Charitable Foundation for the Mascoma Lakeside Park.
Was this part of the match or what was it for?
Yeah, they continue to get donations. It will be part of the match for the lake and water conservation fund.
I move that we accept this donation from Eastman Charitable in the amount of five thousand dollars, but thanks.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Proposed Moose Plate Grant Application for Enfield Center Town House.
Well, I was kind of hoping Meredith would be here for this. I can go ahead and explain it. And this is one thing that. It sounds to me like maybe new to the select board. I know Meredith was confused a little bit, but. I think it's good practice for us to bring grants that we're looking at proposing. Um, putting in for to the select board prior to application. I know that it doesn't, it can't always happen. There's times that we learn about a grant at the last minute and we'll just, we'll make sure that you know that we did this and. The select board obviously has to accept that grant before we can actually get it anyway, but. This one's due, I think in May or sometime. It's, we have a little bit of time. So I asked her to, to just bring this forward to the. To the select board, let them know what we're looking at doing and, and get authorization to, to put in for this grant prior to that. Um, so what they're looking for is to get this Moose Plate Grant to go to the Center Town House and to. Put a little bit more work into the restoration of that. There is no match for the Moose Plate Grants and they're, they're. Still designation is for historic preservation and, and working on those. So.
Seems like a no, no brainer that, that there's something we want to pursue.
Yeah, I would agree.
It's gonna go into the fund that was previously established? Is that how it will go when it comes in?
I would imagine we would just track, we have a grant, uh, account, grant fund in the accounting system where the revenues and expenses would be tracked.
Yeah, and this will have to go in for a specific project. That's why I was wishing she was here to explain what project they're looking for a little bit more.
Cause we got in trouble last time with the Moose Plate Grant for the townhouse because we. They kept having to abandon it because you couldn't get any of the work done for like the ten thousand dollars they got. So. It changed and it changed. And I think it dragged on for what, two years or so? So I mean, I'm not opposed to it, but I think it is important to go in with. A realistic project and a number so that that doesn't happen. I think it's more fair that everyone involved.
So I'd like, if we could, just to get a motion to, to authorize putting in for the Moose Plate thing.
Like your motion?
I didn't write.
No, that's okay. Um.
Well, I wrote one, so.
Yeah.
Hopefully it's.
I. I make a motion that the select board approve, um. The proposed Moose Plate Grant Application. For the benefit of the Enfield Center Town House and. I think we need to accept funds later, though, right?
Yeah, we'll accept and expend.
And authorize the town manager or there does it needs to take such actions and execute all documents that may be necessary.
Um, I will second that motion. Aye. Aye. All right, we're good. What is Gopher Funding Request?
Yes, we love those things.
This is kind of part of the ARPA funds rolling out through the state on us. One of the things they did through Gopher, I think they had trouble getting rid of some of their money. So they came out and said every, every town and city in the state is authorized fifty thousand dollars to spend as long as they meet the criteria. That Gopher set forward to responding to COVID nineteen. Um, Chief Holland's done a lot of work on this, writing back and forth with Gopher, trying to make sure that what we're asking for fits within the requirements. So we're, we're coming to the select board, asking authorization to. You, it's, I guess, accept and expend if we get these. Um, gopher funds for this striker cot. For the ambulance, this is on the C I.
Oh, yes, okay.
And this will give us the motorized cot for, um, heavier patients to be able to lift them into the ambulance.
Does this comply with our purchasing policy? Do we have to enter a quote?
I don't believe we do. I'll double check that, but this will, I mean, we can get it on this quote and.
Yeah.
They'll conform to this, but we'll double check that. But a lot of times these medical devices are single source.
Oh, yeah, I, I deal with it all the time, but I think we have to at least acknowledge that and.
Yeah.
In our, so you want this specific item. Approved or the Gopher Funding Request up to fifty thousand dollars?
Well, we're looking at that and we're looking at putting in for this town of Enfield sign within your packet. That would be permanently mounted outside of the community building. We thought it would be good, not only for, you know, COVID pandemic things coming through, but being able to. To let people know that the, um, warming shelters open or the cooling shelters open. And then. At times when we're not using that for emergency response, we can still use the sign for announcements to the town. It's in a highly public visible place. So we, we thought it would be a good use of those bonds to, to purchase these two items.
Same question on this one, purchasing policy, because this you can definitely.
Yeah, yeah, we will.
Just, I just wanna make sure we, I know everybody's with.
Yep.
Um, I think this is great and we could potentially have our new brand on it.
Hopefully.
That would be fantastic. Um, so do you need a motion to, for the funding request or? How did, what do you need to go forward, I guess?
Yeah, I would like a motion to authorize using the fifty thousand dollars worth of funds for the purchase of the striker cot and the. Sign in front of the Enfield Community Building.
That's my emotion. So moved.
I'll second that.
What kind of sign is this?
It's a sign.
Electronic.
Instead of being the one where the letters go flying off in the wind.
This is gonna be like an electric sign with it going across at the high school.
Oh, no, we have assigned ordinance in Enfield. We don't allow those.
That's what I'm saying.
No, no.
I mean, that's what I'm thinking.
Yes, Seeley, you are correct.
It'll be electronic, but it'll be more stagnant with a message on it.
Right, because we developed, yeah.
Because it would be very hard to try and pass that.
It's.
Seeley does make a good point that the town should follow our own orders.
Yes, absolutely.
There's a limited number of times we can change it. We don't want scrolling or flashing or any of that.
It's, and, and I think that the planning board did a really nice job when they went back through the sign ordinance and Kurt really brought us some great information and. We don't need a sign if we can't keep people safe while driving. So especially, but I think we've been talking about it for a long time. Um, do, oh wait, so I made a motion. Did you second?
I did. All in favor?
Yay.
Aye. Our next Arbor Day proclamation. I, I don't see anything.
Yes.
I'm supposed to read. Oh.
I don't know.
Do I have to read this or do we just proclaim Arbor Day?
So proclaim it.
Okay.
April twenty ninth.
Okay, so. April twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, we proclaim Arbor Day in the town of Enfield, New Hampshire. And we urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, we urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
I mean, my husband take the day off from work. And I think my contribution.
Next up, we have the selection of select board representative to the ad hoc branding committee.
We talked about this last meeting, but we didn't appoint it, but.
Eric, I don't know if Eric's interested.
That would not be one of my strengths.
Okay. I mean, I love branding, but I don't know if you wanna do it, John?
Not one of my strengths either.
Oh, I can hang out with the branding people if you guys want. I'm fine with it. If that's okay.
Okay. Put you on the invitation.
There we go.
And I had a comment to hear. One of the reasons I came down tonight was in regards to the, um, one of the comments for the branding. When you talked about it and you talked about bringing it back to the board and you'd have a public hearing, that kind of thing. Then a motion was made. It just, it just said, send back to a slip for approval, but no mention of the public hearing. And I like to see that public hearing.
Yeah, we'll have some public meetings even before we bring it back to the select board. But the select.
Public meeting or public hearing? That's a big deal, putting, making another thing for the town, so.
A hearing is really a legal requirement set by RSA. So we would be doing a meeting, but yeah, you can call it whatever. I mean, I, I don't see that we would want to do it without input.
Yeah.
Because it needs to fit. And we need to like it for a long time.
But you're gonna let people know and, you know.
Yeah.
Get it out there.
Hey, next we have a sewer connection request from Peter Malindi, twelve Malindi Lane. Um, I did read all the material that we got.
Yeah.
And there's a misprint in it. Uh, I would note that Dustin Melzer and Dale Melzer have been. Referenced in that as perhaps in the future wishing to join that. And in another place, Dale Melzer is called Dave Melzer. So the Dale, the Dave has to be changed to Dale at some point.
Um, and Jill's letter, yes. No one else's letter.
But, uh, certainly it seems like we want to encourage people to connect to the sewer, so. Um, I move that we, uh, authorize that connection.
Uh, can we add to it, um, at the direction of? The Director of Public Works. The reason I say that is if they get into a little neighborhood squabble about whose. Personal portion after us, I'd rather that they do what they're told by D P W and then they're. And I'm not implying that these individuals will, but because they have a relatively complicated. Like it's ones flowing through another, if I'm reading it correctly.
Well. Melinda is, uh, my understanding is doing it for his property alone. But there would be an opportunity in the future, maybe some years down the road for other people to conduct to it.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like.
And I'm wondering if, so are they're paying for the install though of the Melendys?
Yes.
And then if the Melzers wanna go on. They own, the Melendys own the infrastructure. Is that a fair assumption?
They probably, they own the pipe to their house, but the one that's ran to the other house. Would be owned by that, that owner.
Okay, I just wanted to, because sometimes you get into who owns the pipe and that. I just wanna make sure we're protecting our team. Okay, I'm fine with it. I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Policy review, release of information policy, formal complaint policy.
So reading through the release of information policy, I, I didn't have anything really that jumped out. Nothing that I would change at this time. Um, I'm not a huge fan of restating RSAs, but I do think this adds some clarification. Cause the RSA ninety-one A gets fairly complicated trying to read it. And. I do think we need to add it on a list where we review it often. It's a, it's a pretty important. Um, policy and to make sure that we're in line with RSA ninety-one A. So. I would, I would say we probably should add this to an annual review.
I, um, I noticed and I like the, the, um, underlying for attorney fees where if it's. One of our officials, like some of us, that violates, we may be liable to pay those fees. So. I think that's really important because people need, on committees need to take. RSA ninety-one very seriously and not be using personal emails and not producing them in the past, I think. Because if you get sued, I don't want our town picking up the bill for that kind of thing. No, I was fine with it.
With that, I would just reaffirm.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We reaffirm the release of information policy and application of right to know statutes.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the formal complaint policy is coming back to you from the last meeting. We, we rewrote this policy to be a formal complaint and then made a formal complaint form. I did receive your email, Kate, on the word complainant. But. I wanted to discuss it at this meeting if we'd like to do that.
Yeah, I mean, so I just said complainant is a, a great word and it is exactly what belongs there. However, is it in plain enough English so that the average? However, is it in plain enough English so that the average person who might use the form can, I don't know the answer to that because. I'm not a very good judge of um, basic, basic vocabulary. I don't know how you do. Or do we just assume that somebody will nicely be like, that's your name?
If it comes in wrong, we'll.
Yeah, okay, no, I, and that's fine. I just wanted to. I get accused of using words that aren't accessible.
The other thing that was questioned a little bit that I wanted to just bring it, bring forward and see was the subject signature part at the bottom. And then we added the if applicable to that. And to me, that's truly if someone complains about you, that you sign that this. That you know about the complaint and you can discuss with. I, I think it's only fair that. If someone complains about a town employee or official and the investigation's done, that they are advised of that.
Absolutely.
Hmm. Okay. Very nice. Um, and do we need to reaffirm that?
Well, this would be a new adoption.
Okay.
Um, the policy itself, though, is it's a, is it a rewrite of?
Well, we took the complaint policy and you guys asked it to be some.
So it's together as one unit. Okay.
So I would probably, did we, we didn't. We didn't rescind the complaint policy from last time?
I didn't rescind the original. They only sent the uh.
Rescind. Do you think they should probably rescind the original and then adopt this one?
They can rescind the the previous one, the complaint and observation policy and then adopt this and then I'll just reprint with the proper. Footers for signature next time.
Got it. So I make a motion that we rescind the formal complaint policy from two thousand.
The complaint and observation procedure policy.
Of that.
Of two thousand and three.
Two thousand and three? Yeah, sorry, I'm down here if I squint. Um. So the motion is that we're gonna, um, to make it more clear, I make a motion that we rescind the complaint and observation procedure policy. From February third of two thousand and three. And can I say and replace it with, you think that's fair? Okay, and replace it with the formal complaint policy, which is the policy and the form.
And I will second that. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for helping out.
Uh, let's do a lot of administrative items. Any public comments on items that have uh not been addressed tonight?
I had a question on the the next one, so excavating gun.
Oh, okay, well, the Conkey's intent to excavate and gravel tax levy?
Is that a new lot?
No, that's, that is, that's the conky pit on the Bard Road.
Yep.
Right. Is it a new lot, though? Is it?
No, it's, no, it's the same lot they had.
Continued work.
Yeah.
Close to the prime wetland, pretty close to it. And then a couple of weeks ago, there was um. I mean, you're supposed to put, once you're done with it, you're supposed to put the top slot on it. And I just wondered. If that had taken place on the other.
Would you like to copy your information?
Yeah, sure.
I would say you're even on mine either way.
Well, you can make email it.
Yeah, we have to, we have to visit that. So Rob from Planning and Development visited that site and saw what he was doing for reclamation.
I sent him out there a couple of weeks ago.
Well, he has, he has to go out there anyway and make sure it's all up to.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Um, I think that's it.
Do we have anything to sign?
We have. Yes. We have to sign the Conkey stuff, right? And then other than that, it's just informational items. Well, we could probably have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, online people too.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for listening.